Good afternoon. This is the Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session. It is Wednesday, July sixth, 2022. It is one oh two P M. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building One, Room Two Eighty. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Ty Mensah is excused for this week, and Commissioner Gary Edwards is joining us from the boardroom, as well as our county manager Ramirez Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. So our agenda today, we will start with the review of the Board of County Commissioners draft agenda for our meeting of July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. With that, we will call the meeting to order at two P M. The pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards, approval of the Tuesday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-two agenda, and approval of the board meeting minutes from June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. And then we have three presentations. So we're gonna be in it for the long run. Okay, the first presentation, it's a presentation of Thurston County incidental take permit.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I believe this is, in addition to help as a presentation, this is a point of celebration. And this is an incredible milestone for the county. Where representatives of the United States Fish and Wildlife Service will be coming and present the board, design incidental take permit associated with the Habitat Conservation Plan. This process started when the U S Fish and Wildlife listed several prairie species. They were threatened or they were endangered under the Endangered Species Act, which included the Mazama pocket gopher, the subspecies, as well as others. So in two thousand and thirteen, we started building the Habitat Conservation Plan Public Awareness and Input. And in two thousand and sixteen, staff started working and developing with U S Fish and Wildlife, the H C P. Through many iterations, in two thousand and twenty, the Board of County Commissioners approved the fourth draft of the Habitat Conservation Plan, which that provided the premise in which the U S Fish and Wildlife listed, put in the federal registry on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. What was the first step in providing comments, receiving comments from the public related to the H C P? So last week, we got received a sign on H C P. And when I personally received that email, I cannot even express my joy, first of all, but also my appreciation, my appreciation for Josh, his team, as well as the coordination and partnership with U S Fish and Wildlife staff. This process has not been easy, and also my appreciation to the leadership of the Board of County Commissioners has provided. I remember back in two thousand and sixteen, when I, the first day in my new position, I was trying to understand the complexity of what this really means to the county. And it was a, it was a difficult subject to understand to begin with, and it was a difficult journey to be part of that. But also, I am so proud really of county staff, the Board of County Commissioners' leadership as to where we are here, because at the end of the day, this milestone is to the benefit of the residents of Thurston County. Finally, the residents of Thurston County will be able to do what they believe they want to do on their own properties without having the dark cloud of this H C P. So, thank you to everyone involved, and this is just my words of appreciation to get us here. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Josh, anything you would like to add? Or Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. The county manager's response on Friday evening was, I think, perfect. It was about tenacity. And Thurston County, the staff and leadership and commissioners, multiple boards have been tenacious in serving the citizens of Thurston County. Without this H C P, the service areas that the H C P covers, we could be in a position where people couldn't develop their land at all. No homes or businesses or buildings in the service areas where the threatened species are. So that we doubled down in participation and collaboration with the federal government to receive this permit is really, as the county manager said, just a huge occasion and a monumental success. I do wanna make sure that, you know, it kinda feel like a broken record, but it's important to remember that this is really a three-step process to implement the Habitat Conservation Plan. The first step is receiving the incidental take permit, and that's this success that we're going to be celebrating on July twelfth. The next two steps are the implementing codes and ordinances, so the actual rules that we need to write into our codes, Thurston County Code, in the land acquisition. And we're doing well on both. Our timelines are set that we will continue to be able to implement the new permit in January of twenty twenty-three. So first big milestone achieved, two more to go, but I think doing great on the path. And if there's anything more that Chris would like to add? Oh, and let me also say, I will be joining via Zoom, so I'm not gonna be in the boardroom on Tuesday. But I do believe this is a great success for the commissioners and the U S Fish and Wildlife Service to take that time to shake each other's hands and demonstrate that appreciation. So, thank you. Chris, anything to add? Sorry, Chair.
I'm hoping I can be in the boardroom as well. Commissioner Edwards, any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Josh, you said there's one down and two to go. What, what does that actually mean?
So we've talked about on multiple occasions, the three main pieces to implementing the Habitat Conservation Plan. The first is receiving the permit from the federal government, and that's this success. The next is part of the plan, we need to have the land acquired for the mitigation purposes, so that's the land acquisition. We're still in the process there. We've got most of the service areas ready to go for the ten percent of the thirty-year permit for the first two years to start that implementation process, if you recall that, the land acquisition. And then the third piece is the codes and ordinances. We have to actually write this into our codes and ordinances. And those have gone before the planning commission, and they're in legal review right now, legal and staff review. We have had community input on the codes and ordinances. You'll start to see those come before you relatively soon as a draft. And then we're hoping for approval from the board in our current timeline, early October, so that the whole thing, those three pieces, will be in place at the beginning of the new year, so we can start issuing permits. So that's, that's what I mean by one down, two to go. One, permit from the federal government, two to go, land acquisition, and codes and ordinances. Is that helpful?
Yes, and we won't know the actual cost to the individual that wants to build a home yet. Is that right? We're gonna know that soon, but not yet?
So you can use the calculator form that we have on the website currently to get a good estimate of what the impact will be, but correct. We don't have all the pieces in terms of the fee schedule and the way that interacts with the charges that we'll have to provide. We don't have that specific down to the penny at this time, but you can definitely get a good idea of how much it's gonna cost by using the calculator form that we've discussed in the past on the hcp.org website. Is that correct, Chris? And remember, it's all about first avoiding. If you avoid the, the service area, the soils, it costs you nothing. If you wanna minimize, it'll cost you less. And if you wanna impact a large area, it'll cost more. So really, the choice on the cost is with the applicant. And I'd also say that the Board of County Commissioners has made, I think, some really important steps in buying that cost down through the Conservation Futures Fund, which is used to do the land acquisition. So the costs could be more if the board wouldn't have made those really key decisions in using the appropriate funds to help buy that cost down.
And we have made some land acquisitions. So we're
Yes, indeed.
What, what are we at? Are we, did we get eight percent so far? Got two percent to go? What's the deal? What, where are we at on acquisitions?
So if you'll remember, we have a couple of, what, four or five different service areas. Chris is saying five, I think. And each one of those has that little bar graph that we've gone over a few times, the map of the service areas in the bar graph. We have, remember, the permit is over thirty years span, and we wanna keep pace with development. We don't wanna buy all the land over thirty years. We just wanna stay a little bit ahead of the curve of development in each one of those five service areas. And the target for the first two years to get out of the gate was to get ten percent in each one of those service areas. And we're pretty darn close in all of them. We have one that we're working on really hard. That's the Olympia Pocket Gopher service area. And Kidder Matthews, our realtor, has been great to work with, excellent collaborator out there hitting the pavement. So I'm confident that we'll be able to bring the final piece of the puzzle to the board for approval of expenditure to buy the final piece of the puzzle, which is Olympia Pocket Gopher, and we'll be ready to go in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so more to come, sounds like. Sounds like we're almost there, just more to come.
Well, the permit was the big piece. I mean, that, without that, we couldn't do anything else. So that's really the cause for celebration, I think, is definitely well-placed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. No, it's very, really exciting and definitely a cause for celebration. And if I remember correctly, this whole, you know, three steps, we'll be ready to launch beginning of next year. Is that the goal?
Yes, implementation, January twenty twenty-three.
Okay, perfect. Um, okay, have you discussed, you know, have, I know that you go and talk to several community groups. And what's been the general input that you've received from them?
You know, I think the Olympian had an article a couple of weeks, maybe two months ago, and they said it really well. Something to the effect of, this has been a long time coming, and if nobody, how do they say? Anyways, anyway, it's about a balance. Everybody understands that nobody wants another permit, but we're in the process of protecting the environment while allowing for development. And so, yes, it's gonna cost some money, but the alternative would have been no developing at all. And so there's, you know, it's, there is appreciation, but also, you know, it's a permit. So at the end of the day, it's gonna cost people money, but it also would have been, you couldn't have developed at all. So there is an understanding that we've reached a balance with the Habitat Conservation Plan in protecting the environment while allowing for development.
Thank you. Okay, so more to come on that. Next is Public Works County Road Administration Board Presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The Deputy Director of the County Administration Board, Mr. Drew Woods, will be coming next Tuesday to provide a presentation related to a specific program they have. So looking forward to that presentation as well.
Scott, anything to add?
No, thank you, ma'am. I will be at the board meeting as well.
Thanks. Okay. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm curious, what the, are we talking about building a bridge, paving a road, you know, building a sand shed? What, what's, what's the concept gonna be?
It's gonna be a presentation on one of the programs the County Road Administration Board manages. Broad perspective.
Broad perspective. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I'm not exactly sure. I do serve on the board, but we have our meeting coming up at the end of July, so, okay. Next, moving on to Community Planning and Economic Development, approval of Commissioner Emeritus, title for Historic Commission Member Sandra Crowell.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The board discussed this particular action last week, and you requested staff to bring an action for you to consider. The honoring Sandra Crowell as the Commissioner Emer, under Emeritus' status as part of the Historic Commission. She has served since two thousand and twelve and played an integral role in the production of the Thurston County History Book, Waters, Woods, and Prares. So hopefully that will be a short presentation as well.
Great. Anything to add? Jeremy, Josh?
I just jump in real quick and say, this was at the request of the Historic Commission, and we really appreciate the work that they do. The book, for just for the public's understanding, had stalled, and we were able, with Sandy's help and some good work with our staff and legal, able to get that book out into the community, and it really captures the breadth of Thurston County and the history. And Sandy was a huge part of that. And so since the Historic Commission wanted to make sure that Sandy knew how much she was appreciated, they asked us to ask the commissioners to do this action. And it's not something that we do on a regular basis, so, you know, it's kind of a new and novel thing, not new, but novel. And appreciate the time. We know it's gonna be a busy day, but we will work to keep the presentation short for a moment.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Was there anything you wanted to add?
No, I think Josh and Ramirez both captured it very well. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to opportunity for the public to address the board and county managers' update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure you will receive some public testimony next week. And also, I will be following up on the public testimony related to Patterson Lake on the timeline associated with implementation of the Lake Management District. A brief look with staff, seems to be that we will not be able to, shouldn't get timeline, but I will get into more detail this week, and I will report back on next Tuesday afternoon.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to consent items, A through H, quite a, quite a bit of them. First item, three A, voting in jail, S F Y twenty-three provisional grant.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The Order's Office is slated to receive a grant, just about a hundred thousand, I believe, to enhance voter registration at the county jail. This application was submitted, and this grant is part of the Washington State Legislative Proviso that is coming from the Secretary of State. And the Order's Office requesting the board to grant acceptance of this grant.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
This is, this allows inmates to vote while they're in custody, I take it, right?
Enhance the program as to how they can access to voter registration, yes.
And, and not only register, but won't they be able to vote as well, even though they're in custody?
I believe that is the case, part of the grant. Yes, sir.
I, I would just hope that a judge doesn't lose an election by one vote during this whole process. No more, no more to comment on.
No more comments?
No.
Oh, see, where are you going with that?
You know, there's always an action and a reaction, you know?
How much is it that, how much is the grant?
Is, the grant is for ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars.
Okay.
And I don't believe it requires a match.
Okay, that was my next question. Perfect. Okay. Moving on to our next item, item three D, Central Services Resolution. And there's a, can we tackle all of those together? I see a couple of them.
Yes, Madam Chair. And the next four items are related to central services, reclassification. And this is aligned to the presentation that Robin Campbell provided to the board on the overarching reorganization that she's planning to do with, in her department and many duties that she's assigned to. So let me walk you through the four items, and if you have any questions, certainly, we can address us on each case-by-case basis. The first item, three D, is related to reclassify an senior assistant position to a, an executive assistant within that department, also removing the end date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. This particular action will increase the salary from four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars to five thousand, six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars per month. That will be a one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars per month, or thirty-four point six percent increase. Item three C is also for you to consider reclassification of an office assistant senior to administrative assistant one. In this action, I have a budget impact of four thousand. You're going from four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars per month to five thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars per month. That will be just about an increase of four hundred and ninety-six dollars per month, or ten point twenty-five percent increase. The next item, three D, is for you to consider reclassifying an existing building inspector two to a capital project manager one. And also remove the end date of the building inspector two, which has a December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. This action will increase the salary from six thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars per month to seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars per month, or up six hundred and twenty-five dollars in, or ninety-nine point two percent increase per month. Last but not least, is for you to consider reclassifying facilities technician three position to a facility service, services supervisor. And this particular action will increase the salary from six thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars per month to seven thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars per month, an increase of six hundred and sixty-five dollars per month, or ten point two six percent increase. Those are the four items, and again, those are aligned to the presentation that Robin provided to the board maybe a couple of weeks ago. And we're open for any questions you may have.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
I don't know, I thought Robin was gonna say something.
I was just going to also add that all four of these positions are currently vacant, so it's not like somebody's getting a big pay raise.
And I guess, just to clarify that, that'll have no immediate effect on the budget, but farther down the road, it could have an impact, as those positions get filled and as they grow into those positions.
Yeah, thank you for your clarification, Commissioner. Those positions on the two thousand and twenty-two will not have an impact on the budget because they can have salary savings. But you're right, in the long term, becomes a, a, a part of the base budget, which certainly will be an increase. Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay. Moving on to item three F, it's Human Resources Kept on Salary Personnel Rules Update, K O S.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This particular item is a policy that aims to assess workers with, on the job injury or illness deemed unable to work by the medical provider and by providing a period of kept on salary, also known as K O, as administrative leave. This policy of keeping employees on salary will benefit the county and employees by providing administrative efficiencies, assistant injured employees by continuing their regular pay and reducing the impact on time loss, loss claims on the county workers' compensation insurance. As you know, the county is self-insured. An employee with a workers' compensation claim accepted by the Department of Labor and Industry, L and I, will be eligible for up to thirty days. And the Sheriff's Office employs that eligibility will go up to a hundred and eighty days. The administrative leave, beginning on the, on the first day, allow, following their injury, if they are certified as temporary, temporarily totally disabled by their attendant physician, an eligible time loss. So I will distribute a copy of the policy for you to review prior, for you to consider taking an action next week. But this is a good step, and I believe the Sheriff's Office has exercised this action and has proven to be efficient and effective to keep individuals, they have an injury on the job and, and the purgatory, and allow them to come back to the, to the job sooner than, than, than later. And I believe Brian Bishop from H R is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
Are those employees that fall under this, are they then able to work out of class during that recovery period?
Yes, Commissioner Edwards, if you're also referring to in another department, that also has been vetted, and we are able to have them work in a different department as well, in the transitional work or that late-duty modified position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We'll distribute a copy of the actual policy for your review prior to next Tuesday.
Will be, will it be a redline copy, so that way you can see?
Yes, it's a striped out copy, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Next is item three G from the Sheriff's Office Request for Next is item three G from the sheriff's office request for proposals contract. Medical services for the Thurston County Corrections Facility.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The sheriff's office requesting for you to authorize. Issues of request for proposals for comprehensive inmate. Medical and mental health services at the Thurston County Corrections Facility. The current contract was awarded through a competitive process, a bid process in two thousand and sixteen. Which took effect January first, two thousand and seventeen. The existing contract is scheduled to be expired on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. So the sheriff's office is proactively going through this process. To make sure that those services don't lapse. And it's requested for you to authorize the issue for request for proposals. And as well as authorizing the sheriff to execute the contract with a successful bidder. The proposal includes some revisions of all the staffing, equipment, supplies and materials necessary to provide the following services. For the inmate population and the care, custody and control of the Thurston County Corrections Facility. Physical health services to include intake, screening, exams. Set calls, dental services, emergency care, pharmacy. Radiological and laboratory services. Women's health services, HIV treatment, mental health services to include psychological services, evaluations and discharge planning. There is an expectation that their services will increase with this particular request for proposals, that is the expectation of sheriff's office. And we're working the sheriff's office as to how within the current budget can be managed those increased services. And Under Sheriff Brady is here to answer any questions.
Questions? Sorry, Under Sheriff Brady, anything you would like to add?
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioners. The only thing I'd like to add is. Obviously, like the county manager mentioned, the contract is due this year. We've had some recent discussions with Chief Tomah and his executive staff over there. And it has come to light the need for a slight change in our medical services. Currently, we have nursing services available for about eighteen hours a day. And just the, the medical needs have really changed for the jail. Both from a care necessity and a liability necessity. And so. Our requested change in this RFP is that we're going to ask for proposals for twenty-four hour a day medical services. Obviously, we know that that increase will come at a cost. Based on our current contract that we have. That change would cost, we believe, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We've had some preliminary meetings with Robin. To look at ways of, of funding that, that need really that's there in the jail. And, and I think that the best workable solution that we, that Robin was able to come up with at this time was to shift. Some funding away from our contract housing. Which we're currently not using based on our population. And to shift that money over cover for the increase in, in nursing services. And I'd be happy to discuss that further if you'd like.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Under Sheriff Brady. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
I'm just curious if, if I ask. The Under Sheriff a question is, is the mic not working right? Or am I? Did you have a problem, Chair, on hearing?
Yeah, it was just lagging from my end. So I, I was like, I didn't know if it was my connection or.
Okay, I just want to point that out.
I apologize. I'm, yeah, I apologize. I'm working remotely today. And so were you able to most of that or no?
I didn't get the last of it. That's what I was, because I was going to ask, is this going to be a single contract? With one provider doing both mental health and physical health?
Yeah, so this will be just one provider. There's another change that's occurring. On the mental health side of things, that's shifting back funding to B H O. That, that would be providing that mental health through. Treatment sales tax, I believe. So, but yes, we will only have one medical provider.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me, ma'am.
Thank you. And I don't have any questions, Under Sheriff Brady. Thank you so much. Next is item three H, approval of the voucher list.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For your consideration is for the board to approve the voucher list for the week of June thirteen, two thousand and twenty-two. For the combined amount of one million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars and forty-two cents. And in this particular action, there is no atrium expenditures on this voucher list.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Next, moving on to department items. Items four A from the Commissioner's Office, long-term and voluntary beds expansion project number. Two, five, five, seven, eight, contract amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a matter of background, the county owns what we call a triage facility. And that is next to the Thurston County Jail. The triage facility. Kind of project a couple of years ago to expand those. That facility to add additional six beds. And adding, adding six beds within the context requires a lot of work and effort in design. So the result of the process back in December fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one, the Board of County Commissioners approved. Awarding the contract to the little better that was burst shower, burst shower construction of Olympia. For a cost of one million, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Well, as any, any project that we have seen as of late. And, and the supply chain issues, just the inflation as overall have put us in the position to having to. Increase the cost of this particular project. And in this case, we're asking the board to, to increase the contract amount to. One million, two hundred and eighty thousand. That would be just about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar increase. At this point, the department is not asking for additional budget authority. And it's not included in the, in the, in the budget amendment that you're considering. There is enough budget authority within the current contract and the current budget. To go ahead and, and move so if the board approves it. Robin?
This, this project, the board had originally approved. The contract amount, as Romero said, plus a ten percent contingency. We have exceeded. The ten percent contingency, which is why we're back requesting a higher amount. This is a not to exceed amount. We'll execute change orders as they come. And the project is being paid. By the B H O. With a grant from the Department of Commerce. That is more than enough to cover the total costs.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
So the end result is it's going to be, I don't know, something shy at twenty thousand dollars extra to.
Yeah, thirty, thirty, it's thirty thousand above the ten percent contingency.
It is thirty.
Approved, yeah.
Cost to do it live and inflation, all that, it sounds like. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, moving on to emergency services, item five A, night. Binocular system and basic accessory kits, night vision goggles.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. As you may recall, Thurston County is the lead agency on the Homeland Security Region Three. And, and the Thurston County Sheriff's Office was awarded a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. To purchase twelve nine vision binocular system. And basic accessory kits. Also known as the nine vision goggles. And this is intended to outfit the Thurston County Sheriff's Office SWAT team. And the, this particular requires us for you to authorize. The resolution to get into a local agreement with a public procurement authority. So they can get, they can get access to this equipment. This is allowed. The public procurement authority. Is a consortium of several local jurisdictions that access this particular. Procurement process. And the sheriff's office has been part of this process for a long time. So, and this is how we are able to go with this resolution. Signing this contract, this resolution with the public procurement authority. And that will save time and hours for, in order for us to go ahead and purchase this equipment without having to go through a regular bidding process. Also known this as a piggyback type of a contract, and I believe the board is familiar with that approach. And Ben is here, as well as Under Sheriff Brady to answer any questions.
Anything you'd like to add, Ben?
No, Commissioner, nothing more to add.
Okay, questions, Commissioner Edwards?
And this goes. To one outfit versus a bid? And I'm trying to figure out exactly why that is, that we're, we're not doing a bid, we're going to piggyback.
We're piggybacking.
Understand that. So that's going, doing business. With someone. Outside of the normal realm of things, is that the way?
Well, for instance, I, I think the board in the past have, have seen items when we piggyback a contract with another local jurisdiction. City, county. In this case, it's the public procurement authority, which is a consortium of local governments. They have utilized this process to secure services. So this is, this is, is taking back on this larger contract. Which the public procurement authority has gone through their normal bidding process. To secure those, those items on their own.
Who are members of that public group? Is Ben kind of overseeing this because it's fires situation?
So I'll, I'll jump in here just briefly. So this is a collection of, of local cities. That ended up banding together to help with this, basically create the public procurement authority. And so actually, they're going through, and we validated with our internal auditor that they are following our procurement processes. And in order to streamline and benefit the taxpayers so that, that we're not going through the bidding process, and other cities going through the bidding process, another city after that's going through the bidding process. We've, they have elected to create these groups and these groups are created to help streamline things so that we can cooperatively purchase. And so what we're doing is cooperatively purchasing on their agreement that they've already gone out and bid for. To guarantee that we're getting the lowest price for our taxpayers and utilizing those funds effectively.
I think that's something similar we do on vehicles as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't, wait, Ben, what are? Question, I do have a question. What are? Night vision goggles used for in the emergency services department?
So that's an excellent question that I'm going to let Under Sheriff Brady answer. Because this is actually for the sheriff's department. Remember that emergency services would be emergency management. We're just utilizing those funds. It's important to note that the S H S P grant funds require twenty-five percent of the, those funds that were awarded. To be utilized for law enforcement activities and specifically for terrorism prevention activities. And so this falls into that twenty-five percent that we were awarded, and I'll let Under Sheriff Brady answer the practical application of those goggles.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, Ben covered that well, emergency management. They're the ones that facilitate the homeland security funds to our local region. And so these specific goggles we used for our SWAT team. For a variety of different things, including, you know, missions at night. And, you know, a lot of the residences that our teams enter or facilities that our teams enter do so without power. And so this gives them a little bit of a tactical advantage to be able to see in those environments. And then our primary backup SWAT team is the Washington State Patrol. And they have this capability currently, so this allows us a little bit more interoperability as well with their team.
So we currently do not have night goggles?
We have a couple sets, but not the, to this level. Or ability of these, and certainly not for our whole team. So, and just one other thing to add is that this is, is not a general fund purchase. This is. Through homeland security, federal homeland security through the state. Emergency management and then through our emergency management.
Would these go into the E R and R?
That was my next question.
We have not made that decision yet at this time, so not at this point. That's not, that's not the request that's here. And certainly we'll discuss that. I haven't had that conversation as of yet, but at least as of this time. This is, that, this part of the request does not include.
Yeah, they'll be asking for.
That may be not part of the conversation on the upcoming budget conversations.
Yeah. So, kind of a follow-up on that, Under Sheriff Brady, I don't want to kind of deviate too much, but. Are the goggles that we currently own, are they on the E R and R? In our service?
I would have to do, I'll do a little bit more research for you, Commissioner, and, and let you know at the next morning, agenda setting. I know that the three that I know that we have were purchased. Through a donation process for our K nine officers. So I know, I don't believe those ones are, I'd have to check. We have a couple that I'm aware of that are extremely old. I don't believe they're on E R and R, and I'm not even sure that they're serviceable.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions?
I, I might point out, the Under Sheriff didn't say this, but this is quite a officer safety issue. When you're in an adverse situation.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public health and social services, item six A. Updated Thurston County Criminal Justice Treatment Account Plan.
Madam Chair, the next four items, items six, A, B, C, and D are related to the same items. So I'll give you the whole background. On, 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 on those items. And during fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. Receives the annual, received the annual allocation of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-two in criminal justice treatment account, also known as C J T A. Funding from the State of Washington Hillcare Authority of this funding. Must be spent on substance use disorder treatment and recovery support services for individuals involved in the criminal justice system. Also, is prescribed by law, the local C J T A funds may be. Included in the decision-making process by a panel. And the panel needs to be included, representatives from Superior Court, in this case, in Thurston County. Drug court, public defense, the prosecutor, prosecutor attorney's office and the sheriffs. And also a person, a representative from a substance use treatment provider, they need to develop a plan. The result of, for item six A related to this item. Is as part of the, the requirement. Is that we need to provide a plan, an updated plan to the Hillcare Authority, which is due in October, two thousand and twenty-two. The C, local C J T A panel met in June, two thousand and twenty-two. And approved this plan for the board's consideration. That include several items that I'd like Carrie to walk you through those items. So item six A. Related to the C J T A is for you to consider proving. The. The plan that needs to be submitted by October, two thousand and twenty-two. Carrie?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Carrie Henin, Public Health and Social Services. Yes, all good background. This. Versions of this criminal justice treatment account plan have come to you before. This is not terribly different, with one exception, from. Previous plans, but it is a requirement that we review and update it every year per our contract with the healthcare authority. Did you want me to go through the, I think we now have nine uses included in the plan, county manager?
Sure, briefly, just for, for the benefit of the public.
Sure. Okay, so the, what the local panel has. Okay, so the, what the local panel has included in this plan, again, are nine uses, so substance use disorder assessments when requested by a defense attorney, treatment and related services, including various recovery, recovery support services for individuals involved in drug court, parenting classes for CJT-eligible individuals, again, those are individuals with substance use disorders involved in the justice system, treatment and recovery support for CJTA-eligible mental health and Veterans Court participants, so those would be mental health and Veterans Court participants who also have a substance use disorder per the requirements of the law, medication assisted treatment for individuals with opioid use disorder at the Thurston County Jail. We have not actually spent CJTA funds on that in the past, but we continue to include it in the plan, in case there is a time when the jail does need resources, if we have resources available to support that, housing case management and rental assistance for eligible individuals, domestic violence treatment for eligible individuals, services to pretrial services defendants, and the number nine, the new one in this version of the plan that you would not have seen last year is naloxone, which, so Narcan for opioid overdose reversal, which is something that the Healthcare Authority has indicated is eligible, we're including that in the plan. It's a flexible way to spend money. Should we, should we arise at the end of the state fiscal year with underspending, it's something that the CJTA panel could talk with the PHSS opioid response team to identify, are there needs, is there, would it make sense to do a bulk purchase of naloxone? So it's an eligible use per the state, and so we're including it in the plan at this time.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions at this time, thank you.
No questions for me, Carrie, thank you. Next, moving on. So was item D also part of that? You said to item C, but.
I, I, D just cover item A, which is the plan, and then I will walk you through the other items when you're ready.
Okay.
So, pardon me, item 6B, within the umbrella of the CJTA plan, one element of the Thurston County CJTA plan is restorative justice facilitated dialogues involving treatment court participants. So this particular proposal for you consider this item is for you to provide $9,600 in CJTA funding to the dispute resolution center to facilitate restorative justice dialogues for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. And again, this is one item for $9,600 for the dispute resolution center. Any questions?
Carrie, anything you would like to add?
Nope, that covered it.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So the next item is for also using the CJTA funding to award the Family Education and Support Center $22,000 for July, from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. This item also includes a consideration for you to waive the competitive bidding process. It has been determined that this is the only outfit in the county can provide those services. The internal auditor has provided feedback, it has agreed for you to consider taking those two actions. And again, this is for $22,000 and for the Family Education Support Center for a period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Carrie?
Nothing to add, good summary, it's included in the plan and has been part of our Criminal Justice Treatment Account strategy for a few years now.
Thank you, Carrie. Commissioner Edwards, questions?
The competitive bidding portion, what's that about?
So it goes back to, back in 2019, a bid process was conducted, which began the services in 2020. And at that time, the contract was, has been renewed each year, and the total amount was changing a little bit in the process. However, due to the strong partnership with the, with the Family Support Center and the agency expertise in providing parenting support to the target population, a request is made to waive the competitive process. And again, the internal auditor has agreed, has approved the best effort to provide those services in the county.
That's what I wanted to hear about the internal auditor, thank you.
He has agreed on that, so, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I just, again, my father does serve on the board, this issue was brought up at the last contract, and this is something that Elizabeth has given vice, it is something that I can vote for, but I kind of want to ask the Commissioner, if you're uncomfortable with me voting on this, then I'm happy to abstain.
I have no problem with that disclosure, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll bring it up for Commissioner Muntzer next week as well. Okay, and then.
Yeah, and the next item, Madam Chair, is also associated with the CJTA, and one of, another element on the Thurston County CJTA plan is housing support, including case management and rental assistance as a recovery support for eligible individuals. So this particular item is in a local agreement that provides $105,000 in CJTA funding to the Thurston County Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization, and to provide housing to CJTA-eligible participants. And the performance of this contract, period of this contract, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. If I may say that all those items that have been up with before you have been recommended by the, by the local CJTA group.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, thank you.
No questions. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Public Works. Carrie, anything you wanted to add?
No, okay, oh, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Public Works, item 7A, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bits for the Chayles Western Trail, Burn 1st Avenue Trailhead Access and Parking Project, CP number 51006.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, we're requesting for you to authorize issuing the request for proposals to call for sealed bits to construct just about 19 parking stalls at the 40th Avenue Northeast intersection with the Chayles Western Trail. The process goes, after the bid proposal goes through it, and secure the bids, the little bit will be awarded, and that item, and that action needs to be enacted by the board, so it's a subsequent item, action the board will need to take and award in the contract. We have an estimated cost of just about $440,000 at this point, we'll see how the bid, the bids come in. And in this particular item, it will be funded in a combination of park impact fees as well as real estate excess tax to funds. And this is one of the projects that have been added for your consideration on the, upcoming amendment, just for capital projects in the event that we may have higher bids than the engineer system. And Kevin is here to answer any questions or additional perspective.
Okay, Kevin, anything you would like to add?
At this moment.
Okay. Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
No questions at this time, thank you.
I'm trying to think of where this is, but I don't have any questions. Okay, next is a resolution and call for sealed bits for Kenne, Kenne Dell Park restroom replacement project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is the board, the Public Works is requesting the board to authorize the issuing of supply request proposals, issuing sealed bits to upgrade and replace existing restrooms on the Kenne Dell Park. For some of us who have attended that particular park and used that facility, we can attest to the fact there's a great need to upgrade those bathroom facilities. Obviously, the current restrooms are outdated, and they don't meet the Americans with Disability Act ADA standards. And also, the current bathrooms are susceptible for vandalism. We hope the new restrooms will reduce the maintenance needs, address additional capacity with additional number of stalls, as well as meeting the ADA compliance and the standards. In addition, the replacement of the restroom will hopefully help with lighting installed, as well as it will be somewhat of bundle-resistant restrooms. We have an initial cost estimate of $950,000, and this is going to be covered by the traffic, by the park impact fees, as well as the real estate excess tax to funds. Kevin?
Anything to add?
I would like to add, just to clarify, there are currently two restrooms in the park, one closer to the lake and one closer to the lodge. We are replacing just the restroom at the lodge, just because that is the restroom that is not meeting the ADA compliance standards and is outdated.
Thank you for that clarification, Kevin.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards, questions?
No questions, thank you.
Questions as well? Next, we have our standing items that will conclude our agenda. We do have a public hearing that will either start at 3:00 or shortly thereafter. I will be pausing the 3:00 PM meeting if our agenda goes overboard to start the public hearing. I'm not sure if there's a possibility to do that, but if there is public comment, I kind of want to get it over with and then go back to our agenda setting. So I'm kind of concerned because we do have three presentations, and then we have an opportunity for the public to address the board, I'm not sure if that will take up the whole hour. Romero, suggestions?
Certainly, that is your priority, Madam Chair, and we'll work through the, through the details. Depending how you, the meeting goes, you can probably recess for a little while. I don't think this public hearing will take much time. This is related to the 2022 Urban Development Annual Action Plan. Traditionally, you don't receive much of our testimony, but I have included it on many occasions, and hopefully it will be quite quickly, and then you can come back and resume the rest of the items on your agenda.
Commissioner Edwards, any suggestions, any ideas, comments?
No, I think I'm good with that, thank you.
You're good with pausing the meeting and coming to this one, sir?
Yeah, if you, at your discretion, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so our public hearing at 3:00 PM will be fiscal year 2022 HUD Annual Action Plan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a requirement by the Housing and Urban Development, HUD, the federal agency where the Board of County Commissioners needs to approve after holding a public hearing, the 2022 action plan. This includes specific projects and jurisdictions that includes the unincorporated Thurston County, Renear, Bukota, and Yale. And those projects included in this plan includes the senior services of Sound Sound, and this is part of the CDVG process that we just went through, the Rochester Organization for Families, South Puget Sound Habitat for Community, the Yale and Bukota Neighborhood Rehabilitation, the Boys and Girls Club of Thurston County, the Yale Scholarship for LMI Youth, for the City of Tenino, for the Quarry Pool renovations phase two, for the City of Yale, for the Off Leash Dock Park, the Boys and Girls Club of Thurston County, that will be Tenino Team Center roof, and the Thurston County CDVG Program Administration. And those are the elements included in 2022 HUD Plan. As you may remember, 2022, that was the cycle of the CDVG funding, that it was a coordination between Thurston County, I represent on that, on that board, and along with the cities from South County, including the City of Yale, City of Tenino, City of Renear, and the Town of Bukota.
Okay. Jacinda, anything you would like to add?
Actually, the reason for the hearing is correct, and I could be misunderstanding, but I, I thought that the hearing, the actual hearing would occur on July 12th.
Yes, that's what I was talking about, yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I missed that, I just wanted to make sure that it would occur as advertised, so no, nothing, nothing else to add, thank you.
No worries, yeah, so hearing would occur on July 12th, I will be pausing the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and then jumping to the public hearing. Okay, with that, questions, Commissioner Edwards?
I think I've sat through several of these over the years, and I believe this is one that we don't get any public participation on, just so, I don't think it's going to take a lot of time, is what I'm making comment for, thank you.
But there's always that year.
Go ahead.
Well, hopefully not, but, well, you know, I'm hoping the public isn't engaged and, you know, can see it, but we never know. And I would hate to leave people waiting until we get done with our Board of County Commissioners Okay, with that, that would conclude our public hearing and our agenda for the week of July 12th. Next is, on our agenda is proclamation and awards and advisory boards and commissions.
Good afternoon, Jamie Caldwell, Clerk of the Board. The proclamation draft for pretrial probation and parole supervision week that will be presented on the 19th has been included in your packet for review. I've reached out to the Pretrial Services Director, the Juvenile Detention Manager, and the Probation Manager to ask them to attend and accept. Moving on to the boards and commissions, I've included a couple of items from Mr. Hannah regarding the Agricultural Advisory Committee. The first is a letter regarding diversity amongst the committee, how that is reflected in the committee's recruitment, as well as the selection of new members. The second is in, I'm sorry, the second item is an email outlining how the current members represent the different types of farmer and non-farmer members on the committee. I also received one application for appointment and one for reappointment. The first is from Mitch Lewis, he is requesting to be appointed to the Agro Tourism Board. I've confirmed with the board contact that they have an opening and they are recommending him for appointment. The other one is a reappointment request from Jedediah Haney to the Fair Board. His term lapsed in December and he's been inactive the last couple months because his family just had a baby, but he's regularly available now and would like to resume serving on the board. Outside of any questions, that's all I have.
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
All right, no questions at this time, I might note that the Fair Board has a meeting this evening. I'll probably be in attendance on that.
Okay, so, yeah, it'll be good to see if they have any input. And then, so we will discuss this next week, Mitch Lewis is a new, and they have availability or space in the Agro Tourism Board?
Yes, ma'am, they do. The contact, or the contact for that board actually encouraged. Yes, ma'am, they do. Um, the contact, or the contact for that board actually encouraged him to submit his application because he said they finally do have, uh, an opening for him.
Perfect. Um, and then, that's not appearing on the vacancies one. Is that like a new vacancy that they have?
I just found out about it, so I'll get that updated for you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so then, uh, we can have more discussion about this next week. And, thank you, Jamie. Okay, next, we have commissioners' items, and item number one is Hopkins Drainage District Letter Review.
Yeah, thank you, um, Madam Chair. This is a continuation of, uh, the conversation the board had related to, um, the Hopkins, uh, uh, Drainage District. A little bit of history on that, uh, back in two thousand and twenty, Commissioner, uh, Matthew Jackman approached the county, uh, asking for reimbursement of, uh, Thurston County's surface and water utilities, uh, funding. Uh, that we responded in a great extent, uh, on March 4, 2020. That response letter is attached in your, um, um, packet. Also, following to that, um, the, uh, I believe they introduced a piece of legislation, uh, in this legislative session, two thousand and twenty-two, where they, uh, requested for not just Thurston County, but all the counties to have a retroactive, uh, payment of the stormwater fees back to those drainage districts. That particular piece of legislation did not go through. They didn't pass a committee. And I believe that, uh, uh, Commissioner, uh, Jackman approached individual commissioners with individual questions and individual requests. Uh, we went through those, a couple of, I addressed that, uh, I believe last week, uh, when we discussed these items. And there's, uh, three elements, uh, that I believe, and, uh, that is the gist of my response of this letter on your behalf. So let me read this out loud. And this is, uh, addressing some of the questions I believe that you've received. And, uh, the letter says, "On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I would like to thank you for reaching out to individual county commissioners. The purpose of this correspondence is to address some of the questions, requests you highlighted during such meetings. The county responded, uh, to your initial inquiries about the stormwater surface utility funds in later, in the, in a letter dated March 4, 2020, which is attached here for reference. The letter outlined the county's role, responsibility, and authority. The utility has a current undefined balance of just about approximately twelve million dollars, including the operating and capital funds. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, the Board of County Commissioners approved the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, for the years two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-seven. That included eight stormwater projects with a cost of just about six point two million dollars for the years two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, wherein the process of delivering, delivering such projects. Regarding your request to transfer two hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-three cents from five four, four, zero, six, zero to the Drainage District Fund, six, three, five, zero, the county has no legal obligation or ability to accommodate your request. Further, as I stated in our letter of dated, uh, dated March 4, 2020, all properties within the Hopkins Drainage District boundaries receive fifty percent reduction of stormwater fees. This reduction resulting in a combined amount of one thousand five hundred seven dollars in two thousand and twenty-one, and I make myself available to answer any additional questions. Also, as you may recall, the, uh, the Drainage District sent a, a letter, to the, uh, members of Development, which is located with the City of Tom Water outside of the Drainage District. They are having a public hearing this coming, uh, Saturday, uh, July 9th, where they're considering assessing fees to those individuals because their, I believe their condition is their development is causing detrimental flooding impacts to the Drainage District. You asked me to look into the particulars of this, of their action, and in this case, they're not, uh, uh, asking to expand the boundaries of the district, but they're assessing, uh, they're planning to assess, uh, uh, fees and charges to those property owners within the City of Tom Water. Uh, our attorney has weighed in, uh, they do have the ability to assess the fees and charges without having to expand the, the boundaries. And the Board of County Commissioners is not part of that decision-making process. That is my report on that. Any questions?
Questions, Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, yes. So, at any time during this interaction with, uh, the Ditch District, and I think this stems from a request for funding from our Stormwater Fund, has the problem been explained as to what that real problem is? And what would the fix look like, and how much would it cost, and that type of thing? Have we, have we got that down to where it is detrimental to certain citizens, possibly, or a certain area?
I believe the City of Tom Water, uh, uh, responded to the Ditch District, uh, concerns in a very detailed, uh, letter. I can make that available to the board. Where, um, they make in a, uh, a flooding event that occurred early this year. And that flooding event really has been a, that was a, a widespread flooding event across the county. We got, we had, I don't know how many inches of rain we've had, uh, uh, in January, as you may recall. So the City of Tom Water responded to that in a very technical manner. I'll, I'll make that letter available to you if you like. But to answer your question, at least from what I'm sitting in, uh, from the City of, uh, Tom Water, I believe, we don't know the, the, the intent of this funding, uh, we don't know what projects they're planning to do as a result of it. So I do not have that in mind.
Okay, I guess, recognizing that, I'm, uh, I am curious what that, what the problem really is. I know we had flooding everywhere, not just in that district area. But was it to the point that it's been identified that it was more extensive to a certain community or group of homes or something? Something must have happened that's detrimental to that area for those citizens. I would like to know if they have articulated that in some fashion, whether it's to that letter to Tom Water, or if this just is a blanket, there's a problem, and, uh, we want some money to fix it. And I'm not against, I'm not against their proposal, per se. If I knew more about what the problem was and what that fix would entail and cost, I, I would like to know more about that. Now, I know I'm gonna be facing some resistance here about, are we getting outside the Board of County Commissioners' bailiwick? Well, I'm always interested in trying to help the taxpayers if there's a legitimate, uh, process to move forward and do that. I don't know that this is or isn't. I'm not taking sides. I just wanna know if there is something that we could do. Would it be legal if we did it? And if we did it, what would it cost? And, uh, is it a direct, the damages, are they a direct result from something we're missing here, right? It looks like this has been going on for a while. Rather than just tell them, no way, I'm more interested in hearing what the real problem is, and it would take digging out this ditch. I've heard conflicting information from the ditch commissioners that the county wouldn't necessarily be able to, I don't, I don't know if we have a backhoe or not, but if we took our backhoe on that ditch and dug it out, that would solve the problem. No, we can't do that, 'cause the county can't participate. I was confused about that. Is this gonna take some kind of a contract where an engineer gets involved? Or the ditch district puts a contract out, was out for bids? I, I'm just a little stumped. I still wanna help citizens if it's within our bailiwick to do so. That's kind of where I'm at.
So, that was a lot.
I'm not, I don't, I mean, I'm not committed to doing anything, 'cause I don't know. I don't know what the, what the need is.
So let me, let me try to answer that question. Based on the information that I have reviewed, I have not seen any specifics.
Okay.
Number one. Uh, secondly, it has been determined by attorneys that, uh, the stormwater fees cannot be funding any projects under, uh, generated by the ditch district. The county does have ability to do have any stormwater projects within the boundaries of the district. That has been, uh, agreed upon. If the board is interested, obviously, in, uh, in subsidizing any type of, uh, projects the Drainage District may have, you do have the ability to, uh, under the general fund, to do so. And that has been always your prerogative. But under the stormwater fees, that will be illegal, as far as I understand, and that is, uh, uh, outlines in this letter, is for the county just to give two hundred fifty thousand or so dollars from the stormwater fee to the Ditch District.
Well, I, I would not be so inclined just to arbitrarily write a check. I'm curious what the problem is, and I got a sense from Commissioner Mensah that he also was at least interested in, in that.
And, and in fact, as a matter, I, I believe my address is the three questions that I got from the interactions that you had with him. So, um, anyways, this is a proposal, obviously. Um, I, 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 I want to be responsive to the direction of the board that you asked me to draft a letter. That's the letter that I have before you. But, you know, um, if, uh...
I, I guess, out of courtesy to Commissioner Mensah, I, I, I think we ought to have this discussion when he's available, possibly. I don't know if there's a big rush. And I don't have any problem with sending this letter out, per se. I would just like to know more about what the problem is. I mean, there's a specific covert plug? Do we need to change that? I, I don't know.
I don't know either.
I mean, if we're being asked just to, for money, that's, that, that doesn't go over very good, but there's a problem.
Maybe answering your question of what this sense of urgency?
Yeah.
Is, they are holding a public hearing this, um, Saturday.
This coming Saturday?
Yeah, July 9th to all the individuals involved. And that notice, uh, the letter they sent, they made a statement, and that's what the key of this letter is. Made a statement to those citizens. Uh, they're expecting the county to give them two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars from the stormwater fee. And so, and, uh, and that is, and, and that is, for me, the sense of urgency, and just to make sure the citizens who are gonna be attending that have the position of the county ready to that funding.
Are we going to have someone that can report back to us, about that meeting? Is somebody gonna be there, or, uh, do they record those meetings, ditch district meetings, or?
I don't know.
What takes place with this, uh? It, it's a different process.
It's a totally different, it's a totally different process. So that's my sense of urgency, is to clarify that statement made.
Yeah, okay, well, no, I, I think you ought to send the letter out. I mean, we're not, I don't think we're just necessarily cutting them off if we had information that some of our citizens were in jeopardy for one reason or another. I don't wanna leave the citizens hanging as much as it is.
If, if the Ditch District has specific projects, they can always bring that to the board by the later date.
Okay.
Any thoughts, Commissioner?
Um, no, I, 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 you know, I guess I have the same kind of process, um, that Commissioner Edwards. I'm not opposed to the letter. I read, just read through it and, um, and answered some of the questions. And then, I, um, also spoke with Prosecutor Toonheim about, you know, the Hopkins Drainage District, uh, and he did say that they did send them a letter, uh, just because he couldn't represent them because, you know, it would be a conflict of interest because he represents the board, and just the intent of the letter, it seemed, you know, like they were wanting to take action against us, and so. So I covered that with, uh, the prosecutor on, on that point because I was curious to see kind of that perspective. So, uh, with that, um, yeah, I, I would like to see, uh, involve, Commissioner Mensah. Not sure if it can be done next week. Uh, but I also would like to know, um, the question that Commissioner Ed- uh, Edwards asked about having someone attend that public hearing. It would just be good to kind of see what the general consensus is. I, I don't know much about it, really, um, besides what was discussed earlier with the letter that the citizens received.
I, I have to say, uh, Madam Chair, I, I'm kinda with you on that. I, this is all brand-new stuff. The Ditch District people quoted me, an RCW, that said, you know, the prosecuting attorney was supposed to take on their, their deal according to that RCW. Well, like you say, it's a conflict, 'cause they're representing us well with, uh, two different issues. So a lot of conflicts that are going on here, and we've never been involved in this. And, uh, I explained to the new employees this morning that our business was quite, uh, complex. This is gonna just make it a little more complex, I guess. So, I, I don't know. Uh, I do think anytime we can glean information, we're better off, I think, than not knowing things. I still wanna help the taxpayers if I can. That's my position.
So you have consensus to set the letter, Romero?
Okay, so if you have any specific editorial comments to the letter, please let me know. Uh, I will plan, I'll plan to send the letter tomorrow, so I'll give you some time to give me some comments if you have any.
And then we...
I read the letter, it's okay to me.
Yeah, I read, I don't have...
Oh, the date, the date on the letter I see is wrong, though. So, that's my only correction that I'd pick.
Yeah, it's all about sending it tomorrow.
July, well, it says twenty twenty, the year.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two, and it's twenty twenty-two, so.
You know, I'm living in the past. Before the pandemic.
I, I would like to have some inside knowledge about that process that's gonna be taking place at that meeting, though.
Let me see if, if a staff member can attend, uh. I personally cannot attend a public hearing.
I have other...
And I think, uh, I think it would be pretty difficult.
Well, maybe somebody from the ditch, not, not the Ditch District, but...
Or stormwater.
Someone that is directly, possibly involved. I don't know who that would be, somebody that claims that works for Public Works or something.
Yeah, let me, let me recharge that, see if somebody can attend.
Thank you. Okay, and then, so with that, moving on to other commissioner items. Commissioner Edwards?
Other commissioner items. Did we come up with a solution on the community action council issue?
Uh, we're working on a, on a, on a solution, and it's gonna be twofold, um, what is gonna be a short term. We've got an indication that we do have a little bit of time because all the checks for the July has been issued, so that gives us a little bit of the month of July to find a temporary solution to continue to provide services, uh, to those individuals involved within the program. It also will be having a conversation with the staff to have a long-term solution to this as well. So we're working on this, sir.
Okay, nothing new at this point. And, uh, Mr. Pettit has submitted a couple of letters that we've received, claiming that certain things aren't covered or done in the right way. Are we gonna have legal at least be able to give us, no, we're good, or, uh, yes, we need to have a project number that doesn't match or a change? I know we've got something coming up on an amendment, and he's saying it can't be amended because there was not a... because there was not a project from 2000 or something? So, project number from 2000? Maybe it's the verbiage in it. I'd like to have some clarification from staff here that, that yes, we're doing it right, or no, we need to change something.
So, let me address that. I believe you're right, we received a couple pieces of correspondence. We're in the process to respond to the public records that he submitted this morning. So, we're in the process of doing so. And also, I don't want to reveal too much on the executive sessions they will have with the board, but related to the use of the $1 for furniture in association with the overall project, which is the 3,000 Pacific atrium. It will be part of that written legal opinion that will be received from the attorneys.
So, the project number stuff, that's neither here nor there, it doesn't matter. I'm just wondering if we end up, if we don't solve the problem, if there is a problem and we don't solve it, and we move forward, then do we end up in more delays or jeopardy because we didn't follow the Growth Management Act or didn't submit things to the planning commission under the certain criteria that...
So, the project of the 3,000 Pacific is listed on the capital facilities plan. And that was added and approved by the board last fall. And that is the project in which we are going through the lease process, tenant improvements, as well as the furniture. And that project has been listed on the capital facilities plan. It has a number, a project number.
Okay.
So, and that is the premise that the prosecuting attorney has weighed in on the legality of moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any idea when we'll have the legal opinion?
I, another listener just came back from vacation. I already sent, you know, the points that I believe the board would like to have, clarify that legal opinion, and I believe she's working on that soon.
Some more to go?
No, that's all, I just happen to note those from recent events.
Thank you. Any other additional items, sir?
No, I'm...
The gift of time, I guess, Madam Chair.
The gift of time. It's very rare.
So, you do have on your schedule a commissioners' check-in for this Thursday at 10:00 in the morning. What is the pleasure of the board on that?
Sir, do you have any commissioner items?
No, I think when Commissioner Mensah gets back or something, I think we'll have more fruitful discussions if we're all here.
And I am having scheduled a planning session for the July 15th, a week from this Friday, which is a whole day for more to discuss. I have some items, but certainly it's going to be timed enough, I believe, to have commissioner items. So, what I'm hearing is perhaps we'll cancel this commissioners' check-in for this Thursday.
Sounds good. The gift of time. I'm never opposed to it. Okay, so with that, it is 2:32 P. M. We are adjourned. Our county manager, can you please give me a call after?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.